Second question.
Are we live or do we have to be live or?
Yeah, we are.
Yes, we're live. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this. It's the last meeting of the Community Safety Committee before we change format onto Cabinet. I don't know whether there's a point. Welcome, Mike Evans. He'll introduce himself just before his report. The new Police Inspector for Brockstow. I don't know whether we've sent our thanks to Simon. He was phenomenal. Phenomenal phrase, you've got big shoes to fill. I'm sure you're more than capable of them. Yeah. Well, I'm sure he will be. He was committed to the community and I think as we all are at the end of the day. And I hope you realise that quite swiftly that we're all here for our residents and to improve the lives of our residents, especially the most vulnerable. So can we note our thanks to Simon and send them on to him? So item one then, apologies for absence. Jan?
Yes.
councillor Jackson, I'll be something for him. I apologise for Millam because he can't be here as ex-officio because he's gone back into quarantine for his rear-arranged operation. And I apologise for David Bagshaw, the substitute.
Thank you. Everyone, item two, any declarations of interest? Please.
Yeah, I can't remember which item it is. I think it's the, let me have a look. I've lost my pages there, sorry. The knife crime action plan because of my involvement with the KIA group.
Thank you. The minutes of the previous meeting. Can I propose as a true record?
Second option.
Yeah.
I'll have to abstain from that because I wasn't here.
Yeah, so those in favour please. And abstentions. Two, three, four, four abstentions. And then item four, update from neighbourhood police inspector. We welcome Mike Evans. Please stay with us for a long time. The continuity is wonderful.
There's a big turnaround of staff, isn't there? I get that. So yeah, my intention is. That's it. Keep the finger pressed. It's all good. There we are. Learning already.
Swing cameras are all on to you.
Thank you. So yeah, my intention is to stay here for a number of years now. This is a role which I asked for. So I've got a bit about me then before we start with the crime figures themselves. So I've got 20 year service. Majority of that has been spent as an investigator. So I've been in CID, detective sergeant in a number of different roles. Serious crime, SOC, world, modern slavery. So I was just saying, the last time I presented to yourselves was in the old building for the modern slavery input we did. That was something I did for a number of years. More recently, I've been working as the detective inspector for the Beeston area as well as Rushcliffe and Gedling. So I do know the area. I actually came to college here at Brockstow College at Chilwell about 24 years ago. So it is an area which I'm familiar with, but certainly lots to get my head around. And the way I operate, I want everyone to know who I am, to be the face of the area. If anyone has any concerns, they certainly come to me. That's the public and yourselves if you need anything doing. In the last three weeks, I spent time with my staff and I'm really impressed with both teams, Eastwood and Beeston side. Seen some really good work and we'll talk about that shortly. But if you have anything in your area where there's concerns in the community, please do come to me. Don obviously got an active job in Trow at the moment, which has been working quite closely together. My role is to get the staff out there and engage the community and make them feel safer and explain perhaps what's going on. So we've had some scenes on in the area, haven't we recently? And I think the important thing is to communicate that with yourselves so you know what's happening. Shall we start the presentation? Yep. Great stuff. So I'm going to say click quite a bit then. So if we click, I think we've passed it. Any questions about myself before we move on to the crime stats? So I'm sure we spend plenty of time together and we'll get to know each other well, but of course.
Can I ask you, Mike? You said at the beginning you're with Brockstow, Gedling and somewhere else. I mean, does this mean that your time is split between three of us?
No, no, it was a former role. So my former role was detective inspector for three areas, which was Gedling, Brockstow and Rushcliffe.
Rushcliffe, yeah.
A lot of the investigations which have gone on in the last few years have been my CID staff dealing with them. So this was a role which I wanted when it came up. I asked if I could take it. So it's a role which I've asked for, which is always nice, isn't it? Who said that? Sorry.
I did, sorry. Why?
I was a neighbourhood sergeant a number of years ago and it was something I always wanted to do because in policing, you very rarely own an area as such. You normally go with the investigation. So this gives me an opportunity then to kind of leave my mark, hopefully in a positive way. Let's perhaps a minute of that and we'll come back to that in a few years' time.
I know, and I think everybody in this room would appreciate that because actually having a positive input to people's lives is incredibly rewarding, extraordinarily rewarding, isn't it? I think everybody in this room would agree. So yeah, welcome.
Thank you. It'll be nice to focus on the community rather than the actual investigation and victim. I think that's what I'm looking forward to. So crime performance and it's a very positive picture if you want to click through that one. So on the left, we can see the crime figures then year to date and it really is a positive picture. All crime is down. The figure really to look for is 2019 because that's pre-COVID. So that's the accurate measurement figure. So you can see minus 14%. The key crime areas such as robbery, shop theft, bicycle theft as well, they're all down and it's a real positive picture. Clearly I can't claim any of that, I've only been in position three years, but just goes perhaps to show what's the hard work Simon and the teams were doing. The increase on there which is noticeable is ASB. Well, that would be with the national trend as kind of in comparison to 2019. Now we have people spending a lot more time at home, so ASB incidents are up nationally, but it's something I'm going to work with Maurice around how we can focus our time and repeat victims and make sure that my staff can focus on the right areas to police within there. So like I said, I've been here three weeks. This is the kind of activity we've been doing. I'm really keen for my staff to explain to the community what we're doing. So perhaps use social media a bit more effectively. And I'd be interested in the feedback from yourselves around that. But the key jobs we've been doing and hopefully publicised then. So we had a good modern slavery car wash visit yesterday, looking around safeguarding people working at the car wash. We've had really good bike coding events and we've been using the capture bike this week as well. So that's, I'm aware that in Beeston particularly, bike theft is an issue which people are very concerned about. So we've been going out of our way to put some positive proactive work around the bike thefts. The capture bike is a bike which we tag. So if someone steals that bike, we know where that bike goes. So I'm keen to use that and the new technology as much as we can on the area. Speeding operation, we've had that in Trow this week and we'll continue to rotate that around the areas as we go forward. So that gives you a kind of a picture of what we're doing. On Sunday, I've got my team out on the shop theft operation in Giltbrook just to monitor what's going on in plain clothes and then in the high vis reassurance patrol. Can I click? Any questions about that? So burglary then, burglary was a priority for us. Burglary, as you can see, it's priority since 2018. No hotspots, no patterns or trends. It's a real positive picture. If you just click along, we've had some, clearly I would say this as the former DI, but we've had some really good successes in the CID world with our burglary team. I won't mention the names of the people, but in the last three months, we've had a male charged, a persistent offender who was caught trying door handles. So he's been charged and remanded. An aggravated burglary in Eastwood with two males who have been charged and remanded and a recent burglary in Eastwood where two offenders were caught on the motorway, getting away from the offence and they were charged and remanded. So some real successes and that's reflected in the figures we've got. You can see really good picture there with all in green. Any questions about burglary?
Yeah, on the burglary, does that include things like garden theft as well?
Yes.
Okay, I can't see.
Apologies, yes. Got residential dwelling, non-residential dwelling, which would include the sheds and garages and then burglary, commercial burglaries as well, so businesses. So positive picture across. I'm very aware that you'll clearly have the offences still occurring. We need to keep a foot on that and you'll see when I go through my priorities shortly.
Has the fact that burglary has come down also been affected by the pandemic that people tend to be at home more at the moment?
Yeah, I think there is something in that, in that the people at home probably is reflective. If they're not leaving their house, then it's harder to get broken into. But it's given us a lot more time as well to be more proactive. So our outreach teams, the demand I suppose has gone down, which has allowed us to be more proactive and target the known offenders. That's why we're getting the good results. That's why our teams are straight on to the motorway, getting the vehicles because they're not committed with other jobs. So I suppose swings and roundabouts, but it's a positive picture.
Good.
So the second priority which has been running has been the drugs operations. The two priorities were Larkspur and HEDAR and I'm sure you've all had presentations on that in previous inputs. So a quick summary then, Stapleford, Eastwood, sorry. Both focusing on drugs and ASB in kind of the micro areas there. Upreach have been the lead team for that. So they've been tasked with going out there and enforcing. And since you last met then, we've had five warrants, number of arrests, ongoing investigations. The key figure there is the increase in weapons. So that shows that we're targeting the right people and we're recovering weapons off the streets. One really good job we've had was the discharge of the firearm on Oak Drive in Eastwood. That was one of the jobs I dealt with. Jordan Bradshaw pleaded guilty and is now serving two years inside for that. I think that was a flashpoint, obviously concerning to the community that a firearm was discharged and open during the day in the afternoon. But we were quickly on that and the evidence was strong and he's since pleaded guilty. So that's successful. We've also applied for what we call group funding, which has allowed us to get the knife crime team into the area. So in January, we have to task for the knife crime tactic. That's a team of proactive officers and they're going to be in the area six times a month. So that's positive for us as well to keep the pressure on. And from what I'm told, my partners and the community, that's positive around the operations we're doing there in terms of drugs. In fact, I put that there for a reason. So I did ask my team at Eastwood to go and speak to the local Derbyshire team on the border, just out of interest to see what kind of impact they've had. And as you can see, the beat team there are a little bit stressed because they've seen a large increase in drug activity on their patch. So we've moved that across. What my job is now is to keep that there. Apologies if you live in Derbyshire, clearly. But for my community, that's the best positive indication of the work we're doing, that Derbyshire now suffering. Apologies if anyone's living there at the time, but.
Unfortunately, it's moved to the east as well because we're in Beeston now getting far more reports of dealing. So we're getting a lot more reports of dealing, particularly around the Beeston wreck area and central avenue. So I think there has been a bit of a displacement into Beeston as well.
That tends to be how it works in the drugs trade. You put a fire out here, it will start across here. So for us, it's to keep an eye on it and we'll come to kind of my pledges and what I'm hoping I can get from the community in a few slides' time. So any questions on the drugs activity? Yep.
Well, just on the note of, obviously you've said you've pushed it sort of that way. I think a big part of Operation Larkspur was a house on Scargill Walk, something like that, Eastwood, just off Wellington Street. I know the house is currently all boarded up and it's basically a no-go area. Is there any sort of movement in that of what's going to happen with those tenants, et cetera, who obviously have since been moved out of the property? Because I know that that was a big, big turnover area for a lot of drug crime.
Yeah, I understand the closure order was put in place on that address, so they can't return to that property and that's key for this. We clearly find the drugs and then we need to make sure if that is a hotspot, we work with our partners to get that shut down. So I mean, I am holding off a bit, but what I need is to try and engage the community because what this is leaving is a lack of intelligence in Eastwood now about what's happening. You mentioned what's happening in Beeston, that's not on our system right now. So somehow creatively as a team, we need to get the community to feel confident in me and my team that we will listen to their concerns and try and, I suppose, push for the intelligence again, knowing that if they give it to us, we won't tell you on where that's come from, but we'll act on it. So I think at the minute there is an intel gap because of the successful work we've done. It's pushed it back underground. So I'll be open to ideas around how we can engage the community around that. Click. That's a quick slide around the success we've had with Upreacher. I'm sure you hear this bandied around, but our Upreacher team are superb, really proactive. They did a warrant this morning. We found some live ammunition in an address. That's off their own back. They've built the intelligence, they've gone out and got the warrant and gone through the door. So they are out and what I need to do is keep them fuelled and keep that information coming to them. That's just some headline figures, so you can click on. So on to my policing priorities then. Clearly when I make the assessment on where my priorities will come from, our crime priorities, I refer to the police and crime surveys, this is the latest figures. So this is what the community are saying are their main concerns right now when they're asked. So we've got the driving offences, drug use and dealing, burglary and then online fraud and theft. So I've listened to that, we spoke to our partners and the policing team itself. And if you click on, these were my team's priorities for the area for the next three months. So we'll keep on burglary. Yes, the figures look fantastic, but we've seen some high profile jobs recently in the press, which is important that we keep that confidence for burglary and that we will take that, we keep the pressure on those suspects who are out and about. For drugs then, rather than have two separate drug priorities, I've condensed them into that one priority. So HEDAR and Larkspur will continue. And I've talked about the great results that's coming from them, but that will just be one priority. We've seen the success we're having. So I told my team, yes, drugs is a priority, but we can work a little bit harder on other priorities. So the next priority is going to be road safety and road crime for the next three months. So we'll focus on burglary, carry on the good work we're doing. We'll keep the pressure on the drugs, but road crime will be a new one for them to focus on in addition to that. And within there will be that bike crime, the speeding operations which are causing the community concern. A couple of days ago, we went out with the AMPR car. So I'm sure you all know what AMPR is. So AMPR is the number plate recognition software. So we have to task for that team to be with us, but they want to come back because we ran that in Stapleford and we stopped five cars, we made two arrests. We, I don't think they've seen success like it before on a two hour operation. So they've asked if they can come back and we're keen. So that's Operation Roadrunner now, if you hear that. Operation Roadrunner will appear all over the Brockstow area and my team.
So is it just about road techs and insurance and things or is?
No, no, so I haven't, I'm saying the community have said.
Stop it in four.
So if a number plate's got a marker on it, which says it's perhaps got intelligence to say drugs are being driven through or the vehicle hasn't got insurance, no tax, et cetera, or even if the vehicle looks like it's driving dangerously or is not up to speed, they're jumping on it and getting some great results. So we'll push on with that.
Just regarding the ASB, what's the sort of tactic for, you know, combating that? Because I know it can be a real sort of one with motorist ASB.
Yeah, so I'm finding that, I'll be honest with you, this week has been a challenge because we focused our attention on the tram stop, Toton Tram Stop. And we clearly had a lot of complaints about the groups of vehicles meeting. And whilst I can totally understand and appreciate someone taking pride in the cars and clearly the issue will be the driving, the antisocial behaviour that comes with it. So it's that balance. And so I've said to the team, we need to keep the pressure on there and just deliver those right messages and be in the right place at the right time.
Is that just moved from Chilwell Retail Path to the Toten?
So there is a balance and as you've mentioned, sorry, I'm not sure your name, what's your name? Josh, exactly as you said, Josh. Josh, it's really challenging, isn't it? Because social media is, I suppose, where we send what we do and there was a lot of anti comments around what we did because the perception from some people is we are persecuting innocent people in vehicles and we should be focusing our time on drugs and burglary. But it's not as it's that knock-on effect that has on the community of Toten and the challenges that brings. So it is a balance to be had and part of that will be enforcement and part of it will be trying to engage the community of the driving community to say, well, if you are going to do it, can we try and get some key messages out about doing it correctly and where it doesn't affect? So that'll be a challenge for me and the team. But the team are really looking forward to having something slightly different because I think burglary, HEDAR and Larkspur have been priorities for a long time now. So the road safety, we're just challenging them slightly and make them think a little bit more creatively. So if anyone has any ideas, spots where we can put the speeding camera, areas you think the AMPR vehicle should park for a day, the bike initiatives we've been doing, things like that, please, please do come back to us and we'll get that put into place. Next click. So this comes back to my ask, I suppose, to yourselves, to the community. So yes, we've done really well at burglary. We've done really well at the drugs enforcement, but what that has done is kind of driven the intelligence down. Nobody's talking about it. So what I need to do is try and give the community confidence again to come back to us and say what's happening. So for me, it will be the social media saying, you tell us, we will do and we'll deliver. But I suppose you see the community more than I do at times. So if you can push those messages and say, if you have suspicions about things, please push them through Crime Stoppers to the police. I'll make the promise that every report of intelligence on our patch will be reviewed by one of my staff and if we can take action, we will. So that's the key message from me. I think that's it. Anything else?
Just a quick one then, I've got some, I wrote stuff down because otherwise I forget what I'm going to talk about all the time, especially when I've had coffee. You've gone about Crime Stoppers and that, which is really good. I'd like to see the police actually promote Fearless a lot more as well, which is like Crime Stoppers is more corporate for adults and everybody and it's really good, it works. Fearless is a similar thing, but it's for kids. A lot of kids use social media and that, but it's not just Facebook. I mean, I talked to my daughter, it's very rarely they're on that, they're all TikTok and Instagram and all that. So it's getting them, using the social media that youngsters are using as well, promoting Fearless because it's really good. And it's got a thing at the bottom, like if they're in the youth club and they're using it and someone's trying to look over the shoulder, they could press a button in the corner, it just texts them back to Google. So it disappears really quick and I think Fearless is a big thing that needs promoting a lot more as well.
So I'll be perfectly honest, I don't know much about Fearless. So that's perhaps a conversation we can have.
Yeah, no, definitely. So I'll just, all it is, let me just read what I've wrote down and then.
On that Richard, on the social media side, what I've noticed, Facebook's challenging, isn't it? Because you put something positive out, which we see as positive, but you'll only ever get the negative comments coming back because by the nature of social media, it drowns out the positive comments from everyone else. So I suppose that's why I'm asking the community to say, where do you want us to try and fit around that, to try and get those positive messages across? Because if we can get them working with us like this, fearless, having the confidence to say, I think next door might have cannabis growing it, send it across and then I can prove then that we do something with it. I think that's what I need to be doing.
Can I just, I'll bring in with your little piece in a moment. Can I say, can we put out to all councillors that please encourage residents? Can I say, can we put out to all councillors that please encourage residents to report any drug incidences that they see? To 101 Crime Stoppers? I'm sure we can, can we get a message sent out to all councillors? Maurice, is it possible? Yeah, just a quick email, that's all. Just remind, let's have a bit of a push on that at the minute through the media networks that councillors have. Yeah, if we bring them all on board. Speeding, if you can just catch a few and then actually advertise that people have been caught. I think that has a tremendous effect on people generally thinking more about, you know, I really don't want a big fine for doing this or points or whatever. So, and cars. It's a shame people can't have car meets and without the antisocial behaviour there because, yeah, I'm quite a car fan myself.
So am I, that's why there's a balance to be had.
Yeah, absolutely extraordinary what some people do.
Take pride in my cars, I've got a few, but...
Yeah. Smoking tyres and everything.
Try and get the right messages across without detracting from the fact it's a nice hobby to have, isn't it?
Yeah. Sorry, Jan.
Yeah, I just, it's just a query really.
Yeah.
Because I get, I live in Speck North, so I'm sure you're very familiar, I'm sure you've heard a lot about Speck North. And I get a lot of telephone calls from people living in council properties who are complaining about the smell of weed and their neighbours smoking it and it upsetting them and things like that. Now, how is that to be dealt with? Because it, you know, I thought all drugs, anything to do with drugs was illegal. But would you take action against something like that?
So we need permission to go through that door, don't we? So by building up a profile of someone's address, if it's a regular occurrence. So we have a job yesterday where we've got an address where we're constantly having that problem with smoking. So we don't think they're dealing, but I think they're using it. So my officer dealt with that proportionately and gone round, knocked on the door and advised around the conduct and then we're monitoring that. But equally, if it was smoke, they could smell it, but there's perhaps something more sinister going on. I'm not saying taking drugs is not sinister, but if they were dealing drugs or growing it, then that's why I need regular contact calls. So reporting it, suspicions is the right way of doing it. Fearless sounds like a positive way of doing it, Crime Stoppers is a good way of doing it, building that intelligence profile on addresses.
Most of the people that contact me are elderly people and their properties where perhaps a younger person is being faced and things like that. And they're frightened, they're actually frightened to sort of confront the perpetrator. And, you know, it's very difficult.
I'd suggest not, the right advice there is not to confront, it's to pass that information to us. If they don't want to provide the names, then Crime Stoppers is the right forum because it's an anonymous suspicious report. If they want to contact back, then it's to call 101 and report what they're citing or smell on that.
Then I will tell them to do that as long as there is a response from Crime Stoppers because they seem to be...
Well, no.
There's no response from Crime Stoppers, it's a way of reporting your suspicions.
The thing is, Jan, every report is logged and these go into the statistics. And if so many reports are focusing on a particular area, then the police will focus on that. So people need to report every incident that happens because this is, it's just a mapping exercise of, yeah, there seems to be a bit of a hotspot here. Let's just keep an eye on it or let's go and see what's happening. Yeah, so it's important that everybody sort of just reports in, Crime Stoppers or 101, just to get the statistic in, you see. Don't expect a response all the time, that's just taking more time from police. But if you just report it, it gets the statistics in and it gives the police something to work on, you see.
Well, I'm quite happy to report it on their behalf.
Yeah, yes, lovely.
Yeah, this has become a bit of an issue, I think, the lack of confidence in reporting. I'm glad to hear that you want to go back to the days of intelligence, probably from councillors. Because when we were first elected, we used to have a beat manager and two PCSO as well. I mean, that's all gone now with the reductions in staff. But that beat manager and the PCSOs were reliant on intelligence from the local councillors. And it didn't always mean that people reported things. Sometimes we would go on Crime Stoppers itself and report it because the people didn't feel confident to do it. But we have quite major incidents now where people feel unconfident and frightened to report things because of possible reprimandals. And Barbara and I are finding that really, really difficult to contend with. Trying to encourage people to report things is really, really difficult at the moment.
So that's where my role comes in and you're going to see some press today and what I need to keep doing is reassuring people, if they tell us the information, it won't come back to where it's from. Because my background, as we've seen, 20 years intelligence, serious crime, doesn't work unless you get that trust of those people who will provide that information. And it doesn't come back to them because Crime Stoppers, it will never come back. But it's about getting that confidence to say, if you see something, you've got suspicion, there are channels to do it and have the confidence to do it. And I think the only way I can do that is say, report it, I have someone who will review everything, it's not a wasted effort.
I think we've just got to get into the habit of getting people to report. Not to expect a response because that is time intensive to report.
Probably, my idea now is to report it on their behalf because people are frightened, particularly the elderly. And I'm dealing with people who are in their late 80s and things like that, even in some of the retirement living properties where they've been really frightened. And it seems to them that nothing is being done. Where it might perhaps, it's quite possible and probable that things are being done in the background, but they're not aware of it and they're frightened.
So I'll just respond to that. So I think we could, in light of recent events as well, the trial incident and in light of the fact you've seen the community are concerned about online fraud, I think with a good exercise, which has been done in Rushcliffe and something I'd like to bring here, is approaching the elderly groups, the community groups and just giving some crime advice. And at that time, we could field questions around concerns.
That's something that I would like to speak to you about a little bit later on, if that's possible, or I'll give you a call.
You can give, definitely, any initiative you can think of. Because we've seen it's an issue, it is an issue, online fraud is an issue and it's about passing on it in a positive constructive way to the right audience.
Yeah, the thing I've complained about for quite a long time, probably for about two years now, is the 101 number. And the big issue I have with the 101 number, and Maurice was at a meeting where we're talking about it before Christmas. The problem is that, and I think this one bit of it is peculiar to sort of Trow, Castle, Orsworth and the north of where we border Derbyshire closely, is when you ring 101, if you don't use it often, what happens is it Derbyshire Police answer it. What you have to do then is you have to put hash one to get transferred to Nottinghamshire. So that actually stops people in their tracks because they want to report something and the first thing they get, you're Derbyshire Police. So that's what you have to do. And the next thing that happens is that to actually report something, I think it's about sort of option seven or eight. It's more important to ask about visiting prisoners in cells than it is to actually report a crime. And when I tackled our new police commissioner about that, she said she would look at it. But what she did say was that it's the way they number the options is as a result of the number of things that get reported. So I said, well, there you are, you've got the problem, haven't you? Because people can't report crimes because they can't use the 101 system and that's why it's the number eight. And she said she would look at that, but that's certainly, I mean, I've...
It's a barrier, isn't it?
Yeah, it just doesn't work, you know, and if you talk to people, they say, you say, why don't you ring 101? Well, I'm not doing that because it's too difficult. So it's a good... That's right, you know, it's, I think it's something, if we could spend some time looking at that and sort of make people think, if I'm reporting something, basically it's the first thing that happens, that would, you probably get a lot more intelligence as well. Because I do feel that people get fed up waiting to get to hear what option eight is and they won't remember it the next time because they're not reporting things on a regular basis. So if something could be looked at that, I think that would help everybody in...
Yeah, I think the Police Crime Commissioner is the right audience for that in terms of moving that forward. Yes, it's about communicating to the community how to pass the intelligence on without having to go through the 101 number, which we've got some clear ways. I like the idea of Fearless and that's something I think it's worth spending some time on because I do think Crime Stoppers is a bit old, fully dirty type of process. But we have got that right, so we have got ways of channeling that information without having to go through 101.
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually, the councillor Cara has just been saying, Chilwell West has been problematic. People have basically just given up reporting it unfortunately. Police turned up and said, we can't spell it. And it had been quite daunting around certain areas of Chilwell West unfortunately. So people have given up reporting it. But I'm hoping, yeah, now I'm trying to create a new project.
Well, you need to encourage them, it's not the police turning up that is the important aspect of this, it's the actual reporting of it that is important.
That is why people have given up reporting.
Yeah, well, you need to tell people that it isn't actually the police turning up bit, it's the reporting that actually gives the information to know where to go. And so, yeah, the response that you should be giving to people is, you must report it. Don't expect a response, don't expect an attendance, but it must be reported. Because otherwise, it ends up that there is an incident and the police say, well, there's no trouble round there, we've never heard about anything. Because people haven't been reporting, you see.
Being able to perceive a positive result from feedback.
Yeah, and I think that's what I've come back to, so that's my job. So I'm telling the team, when they do something proactive now, they have to promote it on the Facebook. They're reluctant to do it because of the negative comments that come back and I can understand from a wellbeing point of view, it's never nice to be ridiculed on social media, but we have to see through that and say, we've done a warrant, we've got some drugs back, what a great result, let's advertise that. If they give you, I suppose, really simply, 10 years ago, to get a warrant, you go to magistrate and the threshold was not as difficult as it is now. So now we have to layer that intelligence to that magistrate and convince that person, quite rightly, there's a reason to go through that door, but that threshold has changed over the years and now it's a harder threshold to convince a magistrate. So that's why we do need that intelligence coming so we can build up the picture in that warrant application. But that's down to me, so that will be advertising the fact we've done it and it's a success.
Thank you, we really enjoy your reports and as you can see, it brings us off a debate and also a bit of two-way traffic about what we need to do, how we need to communicate with each other, so thank you very much.
Yeah, so just the key point for me, the community, letting them know confidence. And the second thing is, if you've got any ideas, if you're innovative, if you think about this group, Jan, it might be worth us putting stuff in there and letting them know.
Thank you. I don't envy you the drug thing because I'm led to believe half the population believe that it should be decriminalised anyway.
It excites me, I look forward to it.
Well, I find it ridiculous, these people use drugs and then don't realise that the stabbings are down to them for creating the demand. But in America, they've legalized cannabis in a lot of states and a lot of the firms are now going out of business, they're going bankrupt because they can't compete with the underground. Because they're not regulated, they don't have to pay for testing or anything like that or having the proper licences or anything like that. So it's turning out that they can't compete. It's, I don't know what the solution will ever be, but anyway.
I think it's probably one to give a miss because there might be different opinions in this room.
Yes, exactly, yeah, but it's not a victimless crime though, that's the problem. There's blood on people's hands.
Just firstly, the slideshow was brilliant.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't go to laughs, mate.
Shall I go now?
I'll mention you at the end.
Good opportunity.
No, I was going to say, the slideshow was brilliant and I really hope we can have that every meeting, if you're able to come. Oh, no, we ain't going to meetings like this, so the slideshow was really good. Can it be forwarded to us? Because I struggled to read some of that, it is quite tiny. I think it was very good, so yeah, it's a shame we're not having more meetings. So anyway, right.
If you want me to get, if you have time for an import or perhaps a presentation or some of the activity I gave in that right column, some of the stuff we're doing, if you are interested, I can get the officer to come and talk you through 15 minutes about how it worked and what happened. If that helps, you kind of need to tell me what you need and I'll deliver it.
No, I appreciate it, oh, thank you. Right, so anyway, following a recent incident in Stapleford, listen to all of it and then I'll get to the end bit. So following a recent incident in Stapleford involving a knife and then the more recent arson attack on a property, I'm very concerned about the amount of rubbish in communal areas in the council properties around the estate, Melbourne Road, the Crescent, Ilkiston Road in Stapleford. Having spoken to the police, the fire brigade and now the local housing officer, I have firstly asked that with a matter of urgency, we visit all the communal areas in the mentioned areas. People simply can't afford to pay to have the bulky items taken away, so they're storing them in the communal areas under the stairs and in the outhouses, this is creating a fire hazard. This was proven following the recent arson attack in Stapleford on Tuesday evening. Luckily, no one was hurt, but we could easily be sitting here talking about a different matter. And alleyways are blocked with rubbish and overgrown hedges as well. I am asking that we organise a day or a week of action, we visit the estate and put some skips out, we help people get the rubbish in the skips, we cut back the overgrown hedges and we clear the communal areas. And as always, I'm more than happy to roll my sleeves up and get my hands dirty and I know we can get volunteers to come and help. This needs to be a joint approach, working with the police, the fire brigade and any other partner agencies, as I said, as a matter of urgency. And I know, I've spoke to councillor Gould and myself, we're out soon, it's next Friday, isn't it? Not tomorrow, next Friday, week on Friday. We're out with a housing officer and we're going to identify these areas that need sorting. And then following this, we need some action. So I'm sure we could set up around Montrose Court, you're more than welcome to come and have a wander around. I'm sure the local church up there will be willing to open and do hot drinks and that and then you've got somewhere to go for a tiddle and whatnot. And this would be a great opportunity for the police inspector to have a walk around the area and meet the residents as well. So I really hope that's something you can come and do with us and this is something we all need to do working together, especially because of what's just happened. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's positive, yeah, let's crack on, do it. It was Tuesday night, it was in a litter bin and it could have been far worse and it wasn't thankfully. The problem with the address which you might have responded to has now been, we've got the keys back to that property, so hopefully that'll get rid of that issue. But yeah, if the bins weren't like that, then perhaps that did give them an opportunity to do it, so yes, of course.
Mr Chec, we've got the chief executive on, is that something that we could sort out, Ru?
Yes, that's certainly something that we can sort out. I'll speak to our head of housing tomorrow and we'll liaise with councillor McCrae and try to get a date in the diary to do that.
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
I always find it difficult that if you go around the poorer areas, they're always looking more scruffy with things littered around all over the place, aren't they? Because people can't afford to keep the places nice. So it's something we've talked about for a long, long time, that houses should actually focus on these areas and accept the fact that there will be a cost to clear them up now and again and just to go and do it. I mean, the city in the student areas have accepted that and maybe we might find a way forward. But expense and we've got no money at the minute, I'm sure. We're all looking forward to the budgets that are coming up that you can criticise us about, that's right.
I believe the housing in the last committee meeting just before Christmas actually did pass a resolution to actually start charging especially people living in flats and to have the stairwells cleaned on a regular basis and cleared. So hopefully that may go towards sorting some of the problems out if they are. I don't know whether it's being done quarterly or whether it's being done monthly, but I do know the housing did actually pass. And, uh, I think it's a seventy five pound charge. They're actually charging council tenants now.
I'm sure council tenants will be very happy about that.
I was just gonna say, I, I'm not sure it's seventy five pound in one go. It'll be a few pence or pounds. Uh, yeah, it, it communal cleaning part was something that I was dealing with when I was last chair of housing. Uh, and it is on the priority list of things to do. Um, I think they actually started looking at, um, Riddlesdale Court initially, that's where we started. But I think the H R A would have a little bit of cash in it perhaps to deal with something along the lines of what Richard's suggested, councillor McCrae has suggested today.
Lovely. Thank you, that. Yeah, positive idea. Thank you, everybody. Right. Um, thank you for that again. Um, anything you wish to add at this moment, Murray? No? No? You're quite happy there, are you? Uh, so we're, we're moving on to, uh, updating the police and crime panel. Have you got any?
Yeah, this is a bit short actually. So okay, good evening all. And I have put a short update together, which I'm happy to read out this evening. The last meeting of the police and crime panel was back in November and we spoke about the upcoming police and crime plan. And I'm sure you're all looking forward to reading that, which the commissioner is putting together. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, you can find this online and this will be adopted in the near future. In December, there was a confirmation hearing for interim chief executive appointment. And next Monday, we have a confirmation hearing for interim chief finance officer appointment. These meetings have an exclusion of press and public due to the nature of the discussions. And then on Wednesday, the commissioner is holding an online meeting for the make safe, sorry, make not safe plan. And I think that's at one o'clock if I've remembered right. If anyone wants to attend this online meeting, please contact the office of the commissioner and I, and I'm sure they'll help you with your inquiries. That's certain short but sweet.
Thank you for that. I think, I think we've all received sort of links to, um, to police and crime commissioners, uh, uh, invites we've received, haven't we? Yeah. Um, and any questions on that? Right, we, we move on then to, uh, item six, business plans and financial estimates, pages seven to twenty eight. Um, Ruth, will you, uh, yeah?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair. I'll, um, introduce this item. So first of all, I would draw members' attention to page ten, uh, at the bottom, where the objectives of the key safety business plan are set out. Um, so our objective is to reduce antisocial behaviour in Brockston. Uh, the inspector has referred to, uh, that as a, a growing issue, um, during the pandemic and post pandemic. Uh, secondly, uh, to work with partners to reduce domestic violence, um, and support survivors. And thirdly, to work with partners to, uh, reduce knife crime. And later on the agenda, you do have a report on knife crime. So, um, first of all, um, the critical service indicators, uh, which are set out on page uh, twelve of the report, um, really try to mirror, um, some degree of pattern progress on, uh, those objective areas. So we have, uh, critical, um, uh, um, service indicators in relation to check the number of antisocial, uh, behaviour cases. Uh, that information comes from the police. And then we look, um, specifically at A S B reports that come to different departments of our own council. Uh, environmental health, which is principally noise, uh, housing, uh, and references being made to the source of antisocial uh, behaviour that we find within our own housing estates and the communities team. Um, we also, um, in terms of indicators, uh, look at the number of high risk domestic violence cases which are re-referred to the multi-agency risk assessment, uh, conference, which is where the most serious cases are looked at. And we do track, uh, the total number of domestic violence cases, um, occurring in Brockston. We also use as an indicator to track our progress on, on knife crime. Um, a, um, a, a measure about how safe, um, residents feel when outside in the local area after dark. Um, below critical service indicators, um, we look at, um, our key performance indicators, which are the, a supporting set of indicators. Um, and we measure, um, the length of time it takes to close down antisocial behaviour cases. And these refer to our own cases, uh, within environmental health, housing and community. Um, we also look at the number, uh, or the, um, percentage of people who are serving to feel safe when, uh, outside in the local area during the day. Um, and this committee also looks at food inspections. Um, and, uh, we, we seek to ensure that our high risk premises are inspected, um, according to the agreed food plan, uh, target times. Um, and also our, our low risk bonds and we have indicators to track our progress on that. As far as the inspector is concerned, this committee will be familiar with a pattern of action plans which come to this committee for approval and then, uh, we report progress on the implementation of those plans. And, um, in this business plan, references made to action plans for Safe Office for Eastward in relation to antisocial behaviour. Food service, uh, plan, a new cyber theft plan, which members approved at the last meeting. Um, and, uh, we also want to implement our knife crime, uh, plan. Uh, the inspector also mentioned earlier concerns about cyber fraud. And in this plan, we have included a couple of actions relating to training both members and officers in relation to cyber fraud and also to set up a broad webpage uh, to give residents, um, information and contacts and links, um, about how to keep themselves safe online. Um, domestic violence, we have a white ribbon accreditation, uh, which we, uh, maintain uh, through implementing our white ribbon action plan. And we also run sanctuary teams, which is also a key task, um, in this plan. Um, we also, right at the end, have a, a plan to do some work on making Brockston safer for women. Uh, which is something that mirrors a government policy objective and that we want to, um, to pursue in Brockston. Very much perhaps linking to the night time economy, uh, work on which you will receive a report on later in the purple flag action plan. Um, the only thing I haven't mentioned is the, um, review of the sex establishment policy. We don't have any of these establishments, uh, in Brockston, um, but we will be, uh, reviewing the relevant policy. So, um, that's our proposal, um, for our plan. Uh, within page eighteen of the plan, uh, we have some reference to some external funding which supports some of that activity. And on page nineteen, um, mention is made of the revenue budget. Um, the revenue budget, um, uh, the comparison between the next year's budget and the current year's budget is set out. You see, there are relatively, uh, small differences between, uh, the two. Um, and, uh, the differences that are explained in more detail on page nineteen and twenty. Uh, and they mostly relate to, um, the strengthening of, uh, uh, the establishment, uh, which has happened during the, uh, the last year. Changes such as the retirement in the previous head of service, head of public protection. Um, and some of the, um, uh, re- reflecting, uh, in social support costs and, uh, charges relating to staffing. Um, uh, and those are the main reasons for the, for the variations. Um, in the following appendix, you have, um, the proposal for charging for licensing and fee. Uh, and you'll be aware that, um, for many of the, um, areas that are listed here, um, it's been a tough year particularly perhaps. Uh, especially for, uh, people like taxi drivers and so on. Uh, and so, uh, the proposal that's been set forward is to, is to maintain, uh, fees at the current level. But of course it is for members to decide whether that is something that, that you wish to do. Um, if you wish to ask any, any questions, um, on any of, uh, those things, I or other officers, that's Sue or Maurice or finance officers, they'd be happy to help you. Thank you, Mel.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, thank you. Uh, on page, uh, eighteen, where we're talking about. Uh, I, I was thinking how I should, um, uh, cover this. Do you want me to go through page by page or section by section, which, uh, which suits?
To you, to you, Chair.
If, if I go section by section, is that all right with members? Okay, so, so, so we'll start with the, uh, with, with the, um, the C S I's and, and K P I's. Um. Yes, please, Barbara.
Thank you. Um, on page twelve, is that where we are?
Yes, page twelve.
Can I just ask, um, reduction in reported A S B cases and, uh, to the police and the borough? Are those figures the actual figures or are they the figures of the reduction? So are you saying we've, we've reduced A S B to environmental health by hundred and forty two or is it actually the number that? Does that make sense?
Please, please.
That's the, um.
Actual figure.
Right. Um, but also these are not police figures. The police figures are on top of these. Um, and the communities, um, figures, the, the ones that are shown here are the ones which are reported to the Borough Council. The A S B team will also deal with a lot of cases which are reported, um, only to, to the police, but they pass on.
So a supplementary question, sorry, is, so in environmental health, we achieved hundred and forty two A S B cases and where the target for this coming year is going to be four hundred. That's not really a reduction, is it?
I'm sorry, I can't answer for the environmental health figure.
So perhaps I can, I can, uh, suggest, um, what's happening here. Um, we know that, that, um, antisocial behaviour, um, uh, has increased overall. Um, uh, that's reflected in the twenty twenty one actual figure as far as, um, the police's figure are concerned. Um, we have, we didn't have, um, as many, um, uh, reports to environmental health in twenty twenty one. There was a significant uh, reduction. I think, um, so Hickey perhaps is in the best, uh, position to explain that pattern. Um, we ex- we expect in a, a sort of normal year for, um, the level of reporting to be around four hundred. Um, which is, um, as you can see, a reduction in what, uh, what came in in twenty eighteen, nineteen. Um, it's, it's not easy to predict, um, what, uh, the, the trend, uh, will be. But we have set real, realistic targets based on what we, uh, what we think, um, is, uh, is likely to, to happen. Um, uh, it, I, I think obviously we do report these figures, um, to you on a regular basis and you can see uh, the trends.
Yeah, we've got something to monitor.
In our experience, noise, um, is, is, um, is, is still, uh, it's quite a significant issue.
We've got something to monitor it against and it's in line really with the eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. Uh, uh, twenty twenty one was a very strange year, wasn't it really? So I, I think we should sort of accept that target and then as, as Ruth says, monitor it as the, as the year goes on. Yeah. Um, so, thank you. So, uh, y- yes, Don?
It's, uh, it's interesting actually, environmental health related A S Bs. Um, and the fact that the issues in Trow have disappeared off the work programme. And especially as this is going to then turn into a, a sort of a, um, a different way of dealing with things. What's, what's happened is that it's gone very, very quiet. We were supposed to have a meeting in December, which was chaired by a Derbyshire County councillor. And Sue was supposed to be there and the people from Arrow Wash were going to be there. Somebody from, uh, the Environment Agency was going to be there. And it just got delayed with about forty eight hours notice and we haven't heard anything since. Now, A S B, that, that's what we suffer on a daily basis in Trow from Quarry Hill Industrial State, is antisocial behaviour from the companies that are working there. And we've heard, and it's the sort of thing about feeding back information, we've just had it talked about during the, uh, the police report and so on and so forth. But we never seem to get any feedback about what's happening. For instance, one of the companies that's, that's, um, apparently been fined very, very heavily. And when I say very heavily, apparently they've been fined a million pounds by the Environment Agency for what they've done on Quarry Hill Industrial State. And they're still doing it every day of the week now, the same thing. And, and the, the rumour is that's what they've been fined. They were supposed to be, the, 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 the thing they're supposedly even fined for, they were supposed to clear up by the end of September. They failed to achieve that. They then were given a new, uh, date to ha- clear it up by the end of September, uh, December rather. We don't know whether that's been achieved. But I can tell you that, you know, I see convoys of trucks from this company and for companies working for this company going through Trow, day after day after day. And in the factory itself, it just belches out a full, a foul smell day after day after day. Now, I know that we're in Brockston and the problem is in Arrow Wash. But the people in Stapleford, and I'm sure Richard will, uh, agree with me, the people in Stapleford are affected by this. And the only way that we are talking about it is because what I said to our, our residents, send all your reports to the Environment Agency to me and I'll monitor them. We're now nearly three hundred since I started in July to twenty twenty one. So it's, it's just, what, what's happening? Well, that's, that's what I want.
Yeah, I, I, I apologise that that's not on this agenda, uh, that, that, uh, I mean, it came, it came to the fore.
Give you a quick update if you want.
Uh, yes.
As, as much as I can.
Please, sir.
It's a bit of a delicate situation, obviously, at the moment with, um, legal proceedings potentially, um, being started. But just to confirm, I've had a meeting today with the E A because the, this previous meetings have been cancelled. Um, just to get a progress check and obviously they have, the, the notices haven't been complied with. Um, even though progress has been made, so they're in consultation about starting, um, proceedings for breach of their notices. And, and then I was just gonna add one thing, um, rightly or wrongly, but when we record A S B, we record it from the site or from the venue. So you could have a noise complaint that affects fifty people, but we would only log that as one um, source, if you like, because obviously if we deal with the problem at source, then we resolve the problem for all of the complainants. Uh, what we're talking about in, um, Ilkison is slightly different, obviously, because that's something that's outside our remit. But generally for antisocial behaviour, uh, noise complaints and that type thing, we, we, it perhaps doesn't reflect. Um, you know, the resolution doesn't reflect the amount of people that we're assisting because we actually log it as one incident rather than, um, the number of complainants that we get.
Thank you, Sue. Um, the, we, we, we must keep it to the fore. As I say, it's something we've recently taken up, isn't it? To, to, to try and, even though we have little influence over it, we try and. Well, we must, we, we must keep on trying. I think there has been some, some development, isn't it? At least there, there is a focus on this company and they've been fined, they're totally ignoring it. Uh, and then it has to move on to the, to the next step, hasn't it really? And I should imagine if, if the figures you're bandying about are. Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it, it, you must have no sense of smell then. But no, no, uh, uh, we, 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 we must keep trying our best to influence it as best we can. I think Sue's doing a very good job of, uh, uh, bringing, bringing agencies together and just ringing up and asking questions and, and putting them on the spot. So thank you, Sue, for your hard work on this. Uh, I think you have made some, some, uh, progress already on, on, on it. And, uh, we, we shall carry on trying to do what, what we can. Yeah. Um, so, so thank you. That, that was page twelve. Can, can I ask about page thirteen? Page fourteen? Page fifteen? Page sixteen? Page seventeen? So then page page eighteen? Yes, please.
Uh yeah, the um Psycho Prevention Action Plan, member contributions. Presumably, that's the money that you've had, Maurice, already from county councillors.
Um no, that was, this was, this report and the action, the the business plan was written before the three county councillors pledged the money. So this is the money that we asked from the Finance Committee.
Right.
Which has been approved. Um the money, the four hundred pounds from each of the three county councillors, will be on top of this.
Right, lovely, so.
And then there's some of my own, not my personal.
So my plea is that.
Because I'm not that rich. But 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 there's some of my core budget that will go into that as well.
But my my plea is, obviously, there are nine county councillors in the borough. Only three of them have contributed. I happen to be one of those, as is councillor councillor Fole and councillor Williamson. I'll I'll let John McGrath off because he spent all his money uh this year. Uh but that that's that still makes five others that haven't contributed to this very, very important initiative. So can I ask that we perhaps we send a reminder to those councillors? Uh because I know they've got some money left, because I've had a look.
I I I don't think it's really for this council to do that. That that was driven by uh uh Richard, so I would ask Richard maybe to uh. Yeah, yeah, I don't really know. Sorry?
So it wasn't me, it was my wife, but I will ask her after she's made me dinner, because if I ask her before, she'll not make it. But but joking aside, I was actually going to say it is important to thank people. So I wanted to thank Kate Fole um councillors before you and councillor Steve Carr. And to be fair, councillor McGrath did reply and he and he said, I can't remember what exactly he said, but he he did say he'll put it on the list of, you know, and obviously other things come in and then you have to prioritise, which is quite difficult, isn't it? But, you know, he he is popular, everyone's going to ask him for money, aren't they? It's like, it probably said flower in the reply somewhere and I'm I'm saying that in a nice, in a nice way. But, yeah, he 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 did reply, so I do want people to know that he did respond. Um and thank you to the three that did. And yes, I will tell the other off to chase up the others and and we can ask, can't we, you know?
Yeah. Thank you for that. Uh I'm I'm sorry, I missed something. Sue, um Sue Hickey, um is she still there?
That's I'm still here.
You you gave me a very good response to food safety during the week. Uh would 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 you share that with other members uh for me? I I did I did really ask how we were doing with them.
In terms of our sort of food, so um in the sort of the current figures are that for this year, say, from April till the end of December, we're actually at about sixty percent of our um targeted inspections. That doesn't include the backlog and it doesn't include the unrated. Uh but we have recruited, so we've got some consultants that are doing um uh some inspections for us and we're getting, we're doing some work prioritising the um unrated properties uh to try and make sure that they get a food hygiene rating before the end of the financial year. Now, the Food Standards Agency have slightly revised what they call their recovery plan. Uh because I think they realise that most authorities are in the same situation of catching up um and may not complete all of their inspections by the end of March twenty twenty two. Uh so they're sort of given some leeway for Ds and Es to be carried forward uh till the end of twenty twenty three. And that said, though, it's our intention, uh you know, we want to get back on track and start with um a fresh slate ready because obviously it's good for us to be able to start knowing that the programme is back on track. So we're still going to endeavour to do, um you know, all of the um inspections that are due and the backlog log of inspections uh before the year end. Uh and we are making good progress towards that, but there still is, um obviously, there still is a lot to do.
Thank you. I I just wanted to highlight that to members in case, uh sort of the the question about it. Uh as I say, they we we have received revised guidance, uh accepting the fact that we're never probably never ever going to catch catch this uh this up again. Uh but that we we are, we are working hard to, well, the officers are working hard to actually try and address this, yeah.
The the officers will catch up, but they've been in this position before uh when I was chair of Community Safety and they they worked day and night and they did catch up.
Well, we 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 said that we'd try and never to get into this position again, but unfortunately, we we couldn't foresee a a worldwide uh the killer virus, could we, early at the time? Um so uh thank you, Sue. Thank you, Barb. Um right, so I I got to page eighteen. Uh everyone's quite happy with that, I think. Page nineteen. Ask some serious financial questions when it's gentlemen over in the corner.
Yeah, um first of all, CCTV, I was expecting to see something on the agenda about um at least four new sunsets for CCTV cameras and it's not actually on the agenda. Is that going to a different committee? Uh and also, could somebody give some background as to, I'm sure there's a very good reason and a very good explanation to why public protection is going down from a hundred and forty one thousand to two thousand and five hundred.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear.
So on the on the second question, I think that mostly reflects the recent retirement of the head of Public Protection. Um uh that's that um that's significant step when you consider um his salary plus on costs. As far as the um we need to face the um uh C C, the CCTV cameras are concerned, I think that is uh is including capital, not not revenue. This is uh what we're considering at the moment is the revenue budget.
I think we've still got to revisit part of the CCTV, haven't we, at uh at some point? We took uh took the uh the parts that we 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 could possibly all agree on uh and passed it through that we needed to to sort out in our agreements with other councils. Uh but there are other 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 difficult decisions to be made at some point. But actually, quite logical, statistical based decisions, and I hope we all look at them uh in in a cold lighted day when they eventually come back to to, well, they'll be to cabinet at some point. Yeah. Um and any other questions on page nineteen? Uh we want more. Oh, all right then. Reese, how much do you want? Look, right. Uh pha- pha- phase twenty? And then then we're on to um the 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 charges and allowances. Are our members quite happy uh keeping the uh costs the same? Please, Barbara? Oh, Colin?
Yeah, just out of interest, when was actually the last time the charges were increased?
I'm sure.
Uh how how's the title talking about the main objectives, the council objectives?
The licensing fees, yeah. Yeah, licenses, Community Safety Review of Fees, Charges and Allowances.
Oh, yes, they they get they get changed every year, uh they get reviewed every year by by this committee.
I'm pretty sure we put them up uh just before Covid, didn't we, in fact?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it that it just before Covid, we, so that'll be nineteen, we we put them up. Um and they've been in abeyance now for for twenty twenty one. And we're considering now leaving them the same in twenty one, twenty two.
Yeah, it just there seems to be some disparity between uh the way we apply increases to, say, council houses and people who have council garages to the way we actually apply increases to licence, licence fees.
There there is an answer to that, Colin, but anyway, uh do you want, i- is is there more to your question? Yeah? There there is an answer to that. I'll I'll ask Steve to enlighten you on that one.
Yeah, um council rents are covered by government request, if you like. Uh the uh council rents should increase by C P I, I think it is, plus one percent. Yeah, yeah, plus one percent. Uh these are uh these are fees that we can actually set ourselves, has to be reasonable, of course. Um you know, if you have a look at how much Nottingham City charges for its H M O licence, et cetera, it's probably about four times more than on.
On profit making, isn't it?
Yeah, uh it's yeah, it's meant to be, it's meant to just cover our costs, basically. So if our costs increase, then we'll put these up. But it is different to council house rents and ca- and garages.
I was just going to add as well, actually, the money of our fees, they're actually statutory fees, so they're set by government. So, for example, the death of fees, the licensing fees, a lot of them are set centrally, so we don't have any leeway. And then there's only some of them that we can um affect and some of them are capped. So if we've already reached the cap and that's not increased, then we can't increase them anyway. So um some of them, we we don't have the option, even though uh we might like to.
Yeah, well, it it does raise a question. I know we were um talking a couple of meetings ago about we can't afford to pay uh the appropriate wages like, say, um county councillors or other districts can. And I was wondering whether the fact that we're charging a lower charge than everybody else is maybe the reason why we're not able to compete in the market for for wages and get the right colour of people in.
Yes, but but these these charges are not meant to be income generating. They 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 they're supposed to be there to co- cover our costs. But if you look a lot of the charges, they they are actually relates to businesses that have been severely affected uh throughout Covid, taxi drivers and such like licensing, licensed premises uh and and food premises. Um they they've been seriously impacted, so we're suggesting this year that we're not going to hit them with yet another uh increase in costs, when no doubt they've had some sort of, even though there's been sport available. Businesses have have ended up with tremendous debts um uh after this Covid to just to survive. So so I say, we we're making the decision not to not to hammer them this time around. We may well have to do next year, we'll have to see how we go. Um Barbara?
Yeah, thank you, uh Chair. Um very similar to what, a little bit similar to what you've said, Colin. Um I absolutely agree that we shouldn't put the fees up for businesses and kick them in the, you know, kick them when they're down already. Um but are we actually covering all our costs? Because our staff costs are going up, because VAT will be going up, sorry, not VAT, national insurance. Uh we've got more utility bills, we've got higher costs of everything, really. So and in particular, I'm looking at houses in multiple occupation. Um what's stopping us from putting that up?
Yeah. I I think that.
As you say, I mean, it's something that, so we do review it as well. So, you know, it's something that we we have a calculation that we base the fees and charges on, and it doesn't include certain things. Again, there's a a government calculation for things like highway licences. Um so it is something that we do tend to sort of re- review. We go back and look at the um staff costs and things and we possibly, you know, in- incorporate a bit of leeway, which is why, you know, they haven't necessarily gone up every time. But it is something that at least on a sort of three yearly review, we will do. And I'm conscious that it's over a couple of years ago, we did put them up quite a lot. Uh you know, so so rather than perhaps do, you know, twenty or thirty pounds every every year, what we tend to do is do a wholesale review of of, you know, the cost of administering them and issuing them and then uh reviewing it and then putting them up um in one go. So hopefully, you know, that will be something on a cycle that we do redress.
I I think we're going to revisit H M Os, v- very much so in the next month or so. Um so so again, that might be something we discuss within the supplementary planning documents that we've got to produce.
Uh of course, this is um this is going to finance, isn't it? Yeah. Um I I I have an agreement with councillor Barbara Carr that I I can't see any justification for not increasing the housing multiplication fee. Uh and also um making the reduced fee for second and subsequent H M Os the same as the other. Um I mean, to be honest with you, I I I don't know whether we could actually do this as a proposal now, but I would propose that we we increase the fee by five percent, which is the current rate of inflation. And also apply the same fee to second and or subsequent H M Os.
I'll just sort of clarify, the reason we do charge a slightly less fee for um subsequent applications is because part of the application is a fit and proper person test on the applicant. And we do consultations with other bodies, for example, the police and neighbouring authorities. And obviously, if they apply at the same time, uh we would do, we know, we would check for, it would you know, be suitable for all of those applications, which is why there is a slightly deep, you know, a less cost of processing it. Um but, you know, I understand what you're saying.
Well, that's a proposal that's been made. Ru- Ruth, can you?
Yeah, I I can just say, if members do wish to um table that, it would need to be proposed and seconded. No reason why you shouldn't do that if you want to. Um but it would need to be um uh voted on. Thank you.
Can I, on that basis, can I make a formal proposal that we we keep the reduced fee, given what is what uh Sue's just told us, and actually go for a five percent increase on the fee?
Yes, I I I would second that. In that case, yeah. Um. Please.
I I would support that. I mean, it seems to, I was.
Well, in in that case, can I withdraw my seconding of it if you prepare to second it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to prepare to to second that because um you know, one of the one of the blights on Beeston is our houses of multiple occupation. And okay, it sends a message that we, although we haven't stopped them yet, that we're not very much in favour of them and we seem to have more and more, yeah.
Well, well, I think I think um tha- that I I I I I've always said we need to be ca- careful with our language. Uh H M Os provide a uh 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 accommodation for cer- certain styles of of living. Um and but uh left to their own devices, it can it can be damaging if 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 not careful. So so that's been proposed and seconded. Any comments, please, and please, Colin? Are you, you're right, we're going to a, going to a, so, right, we've.
So so through through you, Chair, what we need to do is just take a a a voting agreement as to whether you want to accept the uh accept the uh the proposal, and that will form part of the uh recommendation, which you then need to take a second vote on just to ratify the proposal and the the recommendation as as written.
So can I propose that we add add this to the recommendations, please? Those in favour? Those against? Abstentions?
Yeah. Just just for you, Chair, yeah. Can I withdraw my, the, oh, it's probably too late now. I was going to say, because because in fact, we don't, we just were going to abstain because this is a budget item.
Uh in in that case, yes, no problem. Can 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 we go back a little bit then and go to my seconding of the? Yeah, sorry, I was just seconding the proposal.
Otherwise, it gets very tricky as to why I'm voting for.
Right, so so if you if if you'll abstain while we add it to the recommendations, right, um tho- those in favour adding it to the recommendations, please show? Thank you. Those against? Uh those abstentions? Thank you very much. So uh did did we get to the end of everything?
Yeah, so we just, so we just need to now take a vote on the um recommendation as written with the addition of
We've got the end of. Right, so now I'll go back to page seven. Because I've not actually made a recommendation yet. So the committee has had to resolve that the Community Safety Business Plan be approved. The committee has had to recommend that the Financial Remorse Committee Commensurate Council, that following be approved. The detailed revenue budget estimates for twenty two, twenty three base, including any revenue development submissions. The fees and charges for twenty two, twenty three with with the amendment
With the amendment of.
Of a five percent increase to H M O.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um so so that's a proposal. Those in favour, please, show. Have you seconded that? Thank you. Those in favour?
Yes. Yeah.
Those against? Uh abstentions, please. Thank you. Thank you for that. So um item seven now, um page twenty nine, knife crime action plan. Page twenty-nine, knife crime action plan. Richard, do you know the lady at? Good evening, by the way. Hello, I think you've come along to listen to us here. I don't know whether you want to have any input at all. I don't know whether I'm embarrassing you by putting you on the spot or. Would you like to just sit up at the table and press the button? The right hand button? That's it.
Hi, my name's Natasha Johnson Richards and I'm a resident of Brockstow. I've done a lot of work in Nottingham City and basically my son was stabbed. And I'm very keen to see action within the whole of Nottinghamshire in relation to knife crime. I work alongside the Police and Crime Commissioner and I'm also on the Stop and Search scrutiny panel set for the Nottinghamshire Police. Basically, I'm very keen as a parent to protect children and young people. And I think it's quite a scary time in our society for young people because there is an epidemic nationally for knife crime. And I'm very proud of this council to be able to take these steps towards looking at this issue seriously and setting the following recommendations, which I've read quite proactively. I think you'll be very a pioneer in basically addressing this and taking this issue very seriously because it devastates communities and it's very traumatising for young people.
Lovely.
And I live in Brinsley, by the way.
I was just going to say, if you could clarify, you live in Brinsley, so you actually live in Brockstow Borough, not Brockstow State?
Yes, I've lived in Brockstow Borough for about twelve years now.
Because I think it's something that we wanted to highlight that, as we've spoken with Maurice many times, it's actually the proactive approach that we take locally that makes us one of the safest areas in Nottinghamshire for knife crime. And it's something we should be, hold very dear and still work hard to maintain it in that way. So who would like to introduce this report? Anyone? Please, Maurice.
Yeah, this is to advise committee of the new violence and knife crime action plan. The old plan finished, well, actually, it finishes in March of this year. However, we have completed all the actions within it. So we thought it was time that we brought you a new plan. I'm not going to go through the whole of it because I know you all have read every single action within it. But I do want to draw your attention to a change on page thirty-four that has happened since the action plan was written and the report went into committees. The domestic homicide reviews, which I coordinate, we now have a second one within the borough. It's called Operation Hyperion. We're meeting with the police detective inspector who's running the investigation on February the eighth. And that will kick off the first meeting of that one. As you'll be able to see from the action plan, it's a multi-agency action plan because we do work very closely with lots of other agencies around knife crime and around violence in general. And I'm perfectly happy to answer any questions anyone's got.
Thank you, yes. A lot of knife crime occurs in domestic situations, doesn't it? Thank you. Questions from members? Shall I do page by page? Page twenty-nine? Page thirty? Page thirty-one? Thirty-two? He's written.
That's it. Thank you. I've got a few things, but they're all quite brief. So page thirty-two, I'm concerned that people with banning orders are still going in pubs in Stapleford. And I'm sure they do in other areas as well, but I only know Stapleford. Now, I can fully understand that the young bar staff are afraid to confront them. But surely the licence holders have a responsibility to make sure these people do not go into the pubs. Otherwise, what is the point of banning order? This doesn't apply to all pubs, just those we disregard for the law.
Yeah, I think that comes up on the next item as well.
Richard, could you pass the names of the licence premises and also the persons who have been banned that are going in and any witnesses? Either on to me or on to Sarah Stevenson or John Miley, so we can take action on that. Thank you.
Page thirty-three? Page thirty-four?
Page thirty-three, Chair. And purchase of one of the five hundred drug wipes, do they just detect drugs? Are they just like wet wipes?
They look like a pack of wet wipes, but they are individually sealed and they have to be. They can't be opened before they're used because they might give a false positive. And they're wiped across surfaces, so they use them on in the toilets, around the bar area, on door handles, et cetera. And it indicates whether there is a positive for, and it's a whole range of drugs. It's not a particular drug, it's a whole range. Obviously, it won't indicate who has deposited that. But it provides the police and the licensing officer with the intelligence to say that that particular premises needs to be watched.
I presume that that's what it was, but I was just asking.
It is good said out loud. Thank you. Colin?
The use of mandatory possession order to evict tenants where they are convicted of violent crime, would that be the same as, say, harassment as well to other tenants? Would you use it?
No, it's very specific. The housing legislation allows housing associations to seek mandatory possession. Obviously, it still goes in front of a judge who can decide whether they're going to allow that. But the legislation allows housing associations to seek the mandatory possession where a person has been convicted of a violent crime. But it has to be a conviction and it does not apply to any other criminal activity, only violent crime.
But page thirty-four, yeah.
I was just going to come back up, what Colin just said, actually. Is this something for people, let's say, for example, someone lives in an area and they've just suddenly been sent to prison for three years for harassment of half the community? And they've still got a council property? Is this something that can be looked into to make sure they don't come back to that area? If they only serve, let's say, one and a half years of that three-year sentence?
I can't answer that because I'm not a housing officer, so I don't know. However, I know housing do work very proactively around tenants who have been convicted of crimes. But they do have to work within the legislation, the housing legislation, which is extremely strong around the reasons why you can seek possession. And even where they are allowed to seek possession, of course, it's up to a judge. And the judge quite often then does not allow it. I think housing have a very, are in a very difficult position when it comes to tenants who are causing issues within the community. Because although there is legislation that they can use, I think it's very difficult for them to use it.
Ruth?
I think there are some kinds of other factors to take into account, such as, for example, if there are children in the house and the education might be disrupted by them having to move. So these are difficult and most of them considerate and that has to be taken into account. It's often a balance of risk and harm. But I can assure you that, you know, every individual case is looked at very carefully.
Just for my enlargement, Ruth, I believe we have written within our tenancy agreements that any drug dealing from a property is automatic eviction. And it's not the same for other types of criminal offences, is it? No, such as?
No, not at all.
Isn't it? Right. This is why the reporting of drug incidences is just so important. Because if we find somebody dealing out of one of our properties, we can chuck them out and that's it. Yeah, but we need to have the statistics to know that something is happening in that area. It is happening, I can assure you. In housing at this moment in time, it is happening. I think there's three or four people who have been evicted due to drug dealing. Thank you. Page thirty-five?
Sorry, Megan, let me find it first. Right, thirty-five. So we've got, we deliver two knife amnesty weeks at Beeston Police Station, the helpful bureau in Stapleford and the Eastwood Volunteer Bureau. Can we confirm these locations have agreed to do this? As I am concerned, as in the past, I was told that the location in Stapleford, the staff have some concerns about doing this. This was mentioned last night, wasn't it, briefly? I'd also like to check that Stapleford Town Council have been asked as well, because they own the building, where this would possibly take place, because they have staff as well that need to be consulted on this. I think that's quite important. And then anti-knife crime education, is that the same page or is that? Yeah, it is, isn't it? Sorry. What can be done to the schools who don't want to take part? Because there is sadly a need for these sessions to take place. And I feel all schools should have a responsibility to accept there is a problem and they need to be part of the solution. What can we do to the schools that say they don't want to take part? What keeps sweeping under the carpet?
We're trying to be quite focused, I think. Hello, yes.
I'll take the second one first. The second one is absolutely nothing whatsoever. Most schools are academies now and even the ones that aren't, you can't force them to take part in anything. The three sites that are listed are our ideal, that's where we would like to, because we are very aware that we've been delivering it in Beeston Police Station, but we haven't been able to find sites in other areas. These three sites are where we're going to try and deliver them. However, as I spoke about this last night, we have to consider that the site has to be manned at all times, that the knife bin is there and available to the public. And also that there is somebody there who is a volunteer that accepts that there is an extra risk because people will be walking in with a knife. We've been able to do this in Beeston Police Station because the front counter is manned. And I'm the volunteer who can escort people to the bin and away again because I've accepted that additional risk. However, we can't force people at any other site to do that, it's entirely up to them. So although we would like three sites, we're willing to look at any other sites. But they do have to meet that minimum criteria and risk assessments do have to be done. Because obviously, the consequences of something going wrong are quite high.
Thank you. I think at some point we need to look at, put some extra finance into it to ensure that a bin is provided for a day. You know, even if we've got to provide security staff or whatever. I think it's an avenue we will have to go down at some point. So thank you for raising that. And I think into the next committees, the structures, we need to incorporate that thinking that we can't just keep accepting that we can't find anywhere. We've got to make somewhere, haven't we? And make it happen. Maybe in one location and see how it goes as a trial. Yeah. Bob?
Thank you. I knew Richard was going to mention the schools that won't allow the anti-knife crime education to take place. So my view on this particular action is that, why are we bothering really? We haven't even got a police schools liaison officer at the moment, it says currently vacant. What can we do as a council? I would have thought, and the lady over there might agree with me, this is actually fundamental to getting rid of knife crime, getting the children when they, you know, early on, so they don't get involved in things like that. Can we do things rather with maybe community centres or leisure centres? Try and get that education pro delivered in a different way if schools won't let us in?
Ruth, could I bring you in on that?
Yes, I think we have to acknowledge that this particular type of schools has been extremely difficult and for, I think, completely understandable reasons. Because of Covid and the risks involved from having people coming in and so on. And maybe the more limited and different activity within schools, they may not have had the resources to enable this sort of education at the time when we asked. But there's no reason why we shouldn't ask them at a different point in the financial year to see if they might, they might change their minds. I think it is a difficult time for schools. I think we ought to just acknowledge that.
Maurice?
Yeah, the predominant amount of work that happens is through the tech team and the tech team work within schools. So I don't think they would be able to work outside of that. But once the police schools liaison officer is back in post, that would be work that they would be able to pick up. So I'll suggest that they look at alternatives, enabling the tech team to concentrate on the schools. And then perhaps look at the school or the areas where schools have not taken part and try and find an alternative place there.
Well, there's another way as well, I think, that if we can coordinate a little bit and let councillors know which schools are not taking part. A lot of the time councillors know governors on schools. And I think we should be making those governors aware that the school is not taking up this valuable resource and see whether they can raise it to the governor's meetings and get management to change their minds or to refocus their priorities, really.
I do think it is important working with, is it external partners and stuff? We're working with a new organisation called Support Through Sport in Stapleford. And I'm glad this meeting's on tonight because it means I've got out of boxing with all the kids in Stapleford. But we're doing that. I'm more than happy to get them in touch with councillor Carr. They're going to need some funding and a venue, but that's pretty easy really, isn't it? Because there is a need for it. So if you want to organise that conversation, I'm more than happy to get them to come over and speak to you and see if that can be something done. Because if they're not going to let us do things in schools, we've just got to do what we're doing in Stapleford. And go and meet the kids on the parks, go to the community centres and that and do other stuff. We've got to all work together, haven't we? So if you want me to sort something out, I'm more than happy to do that.
Well, I would say, we have got avenues into schools, maybe that we're not using at this moment in time. Yes, page thirty-five? Page thirty-six? Page thirty-seven? Yeah, Richard?
Sorry. Right, so it says here, hang on, which one is it? It's the second action on there. So obviously in Stapleford, I won't say lucky because it's a shame we need these things, but we have got many bleed kits and thank you to the people that's done it. He said, when can we expect to see them in other parts of Brockstow? Because I am concerned, it says on here, action cancelled. But I know it says funding transferred, but is it still something we're going to come back to or get some funding from somewhere else? Because we do need to put these things up sadly, don't we?
One of the reasons that this action's been cancelled is that it's been transferred to the Chire project. But the other reason is that the bleed kits are, it's a project that the county council are running at the moment in conjunction with the NHS. The county council has not been able to progress it whilst the NHS are unable to provide the training. So it's still sitting at county. I've had it on an action plan for eighteen months now. We will keep it on, which is why I've included it in this one, because I didn't want to just lose it.
Um, we will keep it on, which is why I've included it in this one, because I didn't want to just lose it. Um, but we, there is nothing we can do to progress this. We have to wait until the NHS have the resources to do the training, um, and also that the county council can progress it. Because obviously we have a lot of officers at the moment, both in Brockstow, the county council, that are, um, still doing a lot of the work around the Covid humanitarian aid effort. We're all doing a lot of the, um, the grants, et cetera, and a lot of other work, um, around food. So, um, it, it's staying on there, but unfortunately we can't pro- progress it to this point, but it will come.
I think, you know, a, a few things well rather than many things badly. So yes, keep, keep focusing.
I do, I am aware that the county council have got the kids. They're in storage. But unfortunately, we can't do anything with them, uh, which is, is a crying shame really. Uh, because, you know, hopefully they're not needed, but one day they may be needed and it won't be there.
But it's, uh, I mean, Maurice, good, good on you that you're keeping it on, on, on there and not sort of deleting it off altogether.
Yeah, I, I think it was just unfortunate that the kits were purchased about two weeks before Covid hit. And, and the NHS obviously haven't been able to.
Yeah.
Support it since.
Oh, yeah, the, the NHS is under extraordinary pressure at the minute still, isn't it? Yeah, and everybody's getting very worn out. Um, page thirty eight, please.
Uh, through you chair, just the, um, Chaya group and, and again, this comes up with, to distribute with six schools of video. I mean, obviously, we just heard we can't get into schools. But, um, or we can't get into most schools.
Please.
Um, yeah, um, Chaya, uh, an outreach group.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, that work very well, um, and they're a bit like transformed training in that they find it much easier. Um, than either the county council or us getting into schools. Um, on top of that, the, um, the type of delivery, um, enables schools to accept it much easier. They don't have to allocate time that they would normally allocate to, um, to, to the curriculum. Because they're not able to allocate that to the tech team. Um, whereas this is taking the, um, video in school and allowing children, uh, the, the young people within the, the school to view it at any point. They don't have to take them out of lessons or miss schooling. Um, so, um, Chaya felt that was achievable. I'm hoping that it will be and other, um, outreach groups that have worked with schools have found it much easier to get into schools. So we, we are quite confident that we had to do it.
My, my only other query in relation to that was, is, is fifteen hundred pounds are we paying to Chaya to do it? Or, or is it, I mean, they came and gave us a presentation, you know. Yes, I can understand that they're much more child, much more school friendly than, than perhaps a county council or a Brockster council. But, but is that all we're paying them?
Um, that's all the funding that I have. However, the, um, we've put it into the Stapleford Action Plan. And should the PCCs, uh, the, the PCC decide to fund action plans as, as they have in the past, and that decision hasn't yet been, been, been made. Um, an application for additional funding will go into there. Um, I've spoken to Chaya and they have said that, um, whatever funding we can get, they will, um,
Tailor it.
Tailor, yeah, the project to whatever the funding is, but we will get as much as we can for them, yeah.
Sorry.
No, I was just saying, I remember their presentation. I mean, they were, they were very kid friendly and what young adults friendly.
Are you saying we're not? We're too fuddy duddy, is that maybe? Baseball caps all round next time. But, Richard.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking forward to working i- i- with the Chai Development Project, help develop a video. Um, I've spoke to my friend Natasha at the back when, before the meeting started, and she's, you. Me too, man. You've, you've had a word with your son, haven't you? And he's interested in helping in getting involved in this as well. Um, we, hopefully we're gonna share it in schools. Hopefully we can put it online so people can share. It will make sure everyone here sees it, sees it as well. Um, and other places to highlight the consequences of violence and knife crime. And I would like to thank Brockstow Borough Council for helping, you know, fund this initiative because it is important. And I'd also like to thank the Chai Project for the continued help and support in dealing with issues in Stapleford. I know they're also happy to help in any other areas. Um, and if anyone needs a conversation about that, please let me know. And I spoke to, um, I spoke to, was it last night, wasn't it? Yeah, last night, I spoke to Josh about doing something and he's what Chai Group are, are interested in going up there. I know Steve and Barbara have spoke to them and they're interested in sort of over there. Um, they're very good at, you know, making a pound into a tenner kind of thing. It's definitely value for money and anything we can get i- is gonna help all of us. So that, that's really good. And I'm just really grateful that this council's doing what we're doing now. Because like I said in the past, I've spoke about it and I was told to sit down and that doesn't happen anymore. So I'm, I'm grateful to everybody that's backing this and supporting that. Just wanted to say a big thank you.
Because you didn't sit down. Because you didn't sit down, Richard.
No, it's, no, I didn't sit, I didn't sit down. I didn't stick my head in the sand. You know, here we are five years later. And I'm just grateful for every single person at this council because we're making it happen. And it is gonna save some lives. And I'm gonna shut up before I get up to that.
Just on the issue, because the issue that we've got is that every single secondary school in the borough is an academy. So it, they are not controlled by the local education authority.
Control, uh, some, some influence at one time, isn't it?
However, there is a light at the end of the tunnel in that academies do have to answer to what's called the regional schooling spectre. It's not, it's not the inspectors that you think they are. It's something different. Doesn't work very well. And as part of the, the devolution bids that are going through at the moment for, for Nottinghamshire, actually getting that back into the hands of the county council, um, is one of the things, one of the devolved powers that the county council will be asking for. That will mean then that they will have the power to actually say to the academies, why aren't you doing this?
Yeah.
And it's essential that they do it. I mean.
It's not a business.
That the, the curriculum is very, very tight. The problem that you can, I understand why schools are reluctant to do it. But it's so important that they really can't afford not to do it, really. Uh, and there needs to be a bit of a sea change on what, how academies are controlled, uh, politically. Uh, you know, there should be.
Well accountable to their communities at the end of the day, yeah.
Chair, if I can just, uh, expand a little, but I've found this conversation very interesting. Just give me two minutes, because I've been involved with Network Rail and, and the Attenborough railway crossings. And they're terribly concerned now at the, the, um, suicide awareness and there's suicide issues there. And there's a, a programme to have suicide awareness, for want of a better term or another term, within the community and to go into schools. But given what we've said tonight about schools, you know, this sort of intelligence, I suppose, is really interesting. But it's, um, if, if schools are very reluctant to release time. But, but also the, um, the Chaya project, you know, I mean, Network Rail, for all their, their wonderful technical ability, aren't very good at relating with the community. And with, and particularly with those who have, you know, suffered depression and have, and have committed suicide. But they, they're very adamant at the moment that they want some community involvement in, uh, making the ra- the crossings in Attenborough particularly much safer. So it's, um, it's just a bit of an intelligence, but thank you for this conversation and, uh, you know, I mean.
Yes, yes, but I mean, they, they, if, if you do have contacts with them, I mean, they can, they can come in and use the communication networks of the council, but also of the councilors.
Yes, I know.
Uh, and this is something that we need to, uh, to, to develop if, if, if possible. Because I should imagine there's tremendous cost to them, uh, with, with suicides. Um, you know, it's, they, they could make a financial case to, to, uh, communicate with communities better.
It costs them, the suicide awareness training we went on, many of us from Friends of Beeston Station went on. It costs a million pounds, uh, on average, every time there's a suicide. And there are at least forty professionals involved. I mean, it's just enormous. You know, all the pain, you know, delay and repay, and then the squabbles about whose fault it was or what fault it was. Or who didn't cut back the vegetation or whatever it was, or who jumped off, yeah.
Cross, cross partnership working, it, uh, it can, as, as Maurice, uh, knows.
But I was going to.
Partnership working is so, uh, uh, much more productive than individual working, isn't it?
Yeah, but that's what we're trying to convince Network Rail to work with. Well, the borough council they're fine with, but the community's not their strength at the moment.
I mean, I, I'm right, so I'm going back to page twenty nine. Uh, thank, thank you for that good discussion. As we say, it's something that is dear to our hearts. And we must maintain, uh, the, the bit of a record, tempting fate. Uh, maintain the, as best we can, the record, bit, record that we have within the borough. Uh, so committee has asked to resolve that a violence and knife crime action plan, twenty two to twenty four, be approved. I propose that. Uh, just a second there. Uh, all those in favour, please show. Thank you. That is unsurprisingly unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for your words on it, yeah. Um, moving on to the last item, uh, purple tag, flag, task and finish group. Is, is there someone to speak to this at all? Ruth, is it, is it you again?
I'll pick to, uh, speak to this one, uh, Chair. Um, members will remember that, um, a little while ago, we looked at the Purple Flag, uh, scheme. Um, and whilst we didn't think, um, it was perhaps quite, uh, the right time for us to, um, aim to become accredited under the Purple, uh, Flag Scheme. We did think that some of the, um, uh, elements of the Purple Flag, um, system, which is the standard for, uh, safety in the night time economy, uh, relating to mostly town centres. Um, it could be, um, uh, looked at, uh, with a view to coming up with an action plan, uh, that would help to make, uh, Brockstow a safer place, um, during the, uh, particularly evening, but also, uh, daytime, and particularly looking at, uh, at town centres. So a little topic in this group was set up, um, some councillors were, um, on that group. And this is the, um, considered, um, suggestion, uh, as to what we should be, um, uh, aiming, uh, aiming to do, uh, and, um, uh, in, in the future. Um, so, um, various, uh, suggestions set out in the action plan, um, including things like, um, uh, getting the, uh, pub watch groups to, uh, have an opportunity to share with each other, um, information and, um, uh, you know, common themes and issues. Uh, so there's a little bit of, um, peer support, uh, going on. Um, also, um, the potential for a, a sort of great partner initiative. I know this has been tried in the past, but, um, perhaps a, a more, um, uh, ta- uh, tailored, um, scheme. Uh, but we think that might be, uh, might be relevant at this time, perhaps starting, um, in Beeston. Um, then, um, uh, making sure that the pub watch groups themselves are, are really well linked to the CCTV monitoring, uh, system. Um, we are, as members may be aware, um, trying to promote markets, uh, and we have some interesting events planned. Um, uh, during the evening as part of the Welcome Back Fund. Uh, so making sure, uh, that these events are really well planned, uh, information is properly shared. Uh, so that safety is, is a prime consideration, um, in the running of them is important. Um, trying to, um, make sure that the government's, um, licensing scheme for sitting outside, um, it works, uh, continues to work well now that the government have made that a permanent arrangement. Uh, we have, um, been very proud of the standard, safety standard, uh, that we have, um, achieved for our car parks, uh, and we want to review the, um, the accreditation and see if there are any further, um, car parks that aren't yet accredited that could be, or any further measures, uh, that could be undertaken to make our car parks, uh, safe places to use. Um, uh, obviously, um, working with community groups, um, continues to be important. Uh, sometimes people feel less safe in parks and open spaces. Uh, we need to talk to, uh, local communities to find out more about what their concerns are and where they have concerns in order that we can respond to that and integrate actions, um, into our parks and open spaces. Um, uh, uh, arrangements. Um, we, uh, also want to, to look at, um, a shared basis parking scheme in, uh, in the town, uh, centre. Um, as the Beeston Cinema, um, uh, uh, you know, um, uh, reaches a, a full year of, uh, operation, uh, we want to review how that's going, whether that's causing any issues. And obviously we have some food and beverage outlets which are going to be, um, opening. Um, and we expect that that will result in, um, a boom to the night time economy. Um, so we need to keep an eye on how that is going in terms of, uh, safety and antisocial behaviour. Uh, the Best Bar Nums scheme is a really good standard, uh, for, uh, licensed premises, uh, that we want to promote, uh, and get, um, licensed premises to adopt those really good standards in the scheme. Um, and we want to have a look at our taxi ranks as well, um, to, to make sure that, um, there is, uh, sufficient provision in the right place, um, for people. Um, so happy to try and, uh, try and answer any questions and, and maybe do more. Um, Maurice can help me out, um, if I get into difficulties. Thank you very much.
And, any, any questions from members? Please, Dom.
Just a very quick one. I'm surprised, I was surprised when I went to use the car park at the cinema and found that it's twenty four hour paid parking. Is it, is it, why's, why's that for a reason? Why, why's that happening?
It's not, it's not ours. Yeah, yes, it used to belong to us. We sold it, didn't we? Yeah. We sold it now. Besides the cinema, we don't own that land anymore. Yeah, that's, sorry. It, it was never intended to have a, a, a car, car park facility on that, uh, particular development. It was reliant on public transport.
For you, Chair, the, the, the owners of the land there let us use it as a temporary car park. But they've now actually
Taken it over.
Taken it over and it is, that, which is why it's more expensive than.
It's very, it's very popular as well, isn't it? Turned out a lot more popular than we imagined it ever would be. Is, is Devonshire still available at night time or? It gets locked up, does it? Right. Um, any further questions? I, I must say, um, there's, there's an, an enthusiasm in this report. It was sort of, oh gosh, you know, how are we gonna do this? But it, there's actually enthusiasm within this report. Could, could I ask, uh, Ruth, could you pass on our, our thanks to John Miley? He's, he's sometimes a little bit of a, um, a, a invisible officer now and again. Um, but with a very, very important task to, to perform. Uh, but, uh, yeah, he's, he's obviously put some enthusiasm into this along with councillors, uh, to create this. And he's also enthusiastic about, uh, it continuing to, to, to meet, to, to develop these ideas further, so. Yeah, yes, yeah. So, but pass on our thanks and, uh, so we're asked to.
Chair, Chair, can I just make a comment on page forty three to double, double O seven? Yeah, look for opportunities to work with community groups. Um, Friends of Beeston Station, two of our colleagues there are litter picking every week regularly. I mean, so it's not only Incredible Edible who do those sorts of things. Um, you know, there are other groups as well that probably need a mention as well.
Can we, can we make a note of that and, and, and add it on?
Yeah.
Yes, certainly does that. There are other community groups that aren't specifically mentioned. I don't know why that particular one has been. I don't know why that particular one has been singled out. Um, but, uh, places like Friends of, uh, you know, Friends and Parks are very important as well. So, um, yeah, we'll make that a bit more generic, I think, in the plan. Thank you.
So we're asked to note the report and this is, uh, that, that's the end of the last meeting of the Community Safety Committee. Um, we've got to ensure that the work of this committee carries on into the cabinet system because, uh, it, I think it can sometimes be a little bit overlooked, but it is just so important to our communities, isn't it? And I hope you all enjoyed working on it. Um, sorry, sometimes it's not the shortest committee in the world. Uh, but I, I think it's always been a very, very positive committee. So thank you all. Uh, onwards and upwards.